...you to stop it, unfortunately. But what we can do is, again, work with our state leadership to make sure that they understand how this is directly impacting us and what they can hopefully do to make sure this doesn't happen again.
Thank you. And finally, James Blanco?
Well, in a couple of words, I would say, here the state goes again. The state loves to, they love to decide on our behalf. They love to preempt us. They love to take away our authorities on these various issues without even asking us or reaching out to people. In my view, it's about the worst way you could run a government is when you, when you just decide something, you start even implementing your plan without telling anyone who's actually affected. For example, at the, I still remember that property owner, it was back at the September public meeting for, that the IEDC representative was there, in which a property owner who lived about 1,000 feet from one of their test sites, he mentioned he could smell sulfur. And they did not know this because they didn't ask. That's the worst way to run government.
We're out of time for that. Now, time for rebuttal now. We do open the discussion to all the candidates again for the question about the LEAP district.
Maybe just to make one quick point. Well, I know this seems like it's a done deal. It's hard not to think that when you drive along I-65 and you see the work that's being done, but, you know, I don't like to give up on anything until it's a done deal. So I do think there are some things that we can do. At the last community meeting, there was some good discussion about what we might be able to do from a legislative perspective. Now, can we do that with, at city council? I think that we can work with our, with our local legislators to make sure that those bills that are being drafted right now are going to create the long-term protection that we need because it turns out Indiana is just way behind. If you look at what they've done in Arizona and Colorado and Utah and all of the areas where they don't have such a water-rich supply, we don't want to put ourselves in that position. And so I think we have the opportunity to be state leaders by setting the tone for how we handle this right now and set the tone for the future on other projects as well.
Mr. Blanco?
So I just wanted to mention, there's a couple of things. One, Indiana lacks a water management agency, which you would think is one of the basic requirements for such a massive program. But it's also, I do think that we should not give up so very easily because it always reminds me, and I spoke about it during the time when we were passing that resolution, reminds me of the old former congressman, Jim Johns, who, his first campaign, his first campaign was in opposition to a massive damming project that would have ruined the Big Pine Creek, just to our, to our west in Warren County. That's, that's a place that I enjoy and I always will remember that it's still there because he fought back tooth and nail against the project to dam that.
And Mr. Sanders?
There's been a reference to leadership and leadership on this issue. And James and I showed that leadership. We also, we were in communication with the mayor and the future mayor, who were very supportive of this initiative. I know that Iris also, because of her commitment to sustainability, would also have been a leader on this issue. What's important to note is that this is bipartisan and regional. Attica and Shadland have also passed resolutions which are modeled on the resolution that we passed in West Lafayette. So that's the sort of thing that some of us will do as your West Lafayette city councilors.
Thank you. And now for question four. The council has recently gone on record as opposing the LEAP industrial development project in Lebanon. If the same project were being built in Tippecanoe County, would you support or oppose it? And this question will go to Mr. Sanders.
That's a terrific question. And the answer is, in general, I would be in favor of it. The reason is that the water that would be used for the industrial development would be returned to the Wabash River. Now, we'd want to be able to insist on the fact that that returned water was clean and appropriate for returning to the river, but it wouldn't have the sorts of effects on the aquifer that transferring 100 million gallons a day away from the Wabash River and the associated aquifers would have. So I'm always interested in understanding what the projects are in detail to make sure that they are the ones that are appropriate, but in general, the answer would be yes.
And Brian Russell?
Yeah, I too would support that. A LEAP district here would be jobs, great, great jobs, good jobs, investment, innovation. One of the things I'm really supportive of is innovation, bringing more companies like Saab, SEL, Rolls-Royce, that we already have here, continuing that growth in a smart and sustainable way. Again, these are water-intensive jobs, building these chip factories, and it needs to be done in a responsible way that the water goes back into where it came from after it's been used that's clean, that's not loaded with heavy metals. But then there's other, other companies that would follow that, that would be really beneficial to our community, keep growing our community, and make our community stronger into the future.
Thank you. And now Iris O'Donnell Belisario.
So I would agree with both of them. In general, I would be in favor with a project like this. I think it's great to bring in new industry, but I think there are some major considerations with something like this. The first thing is making sure that our wastewater treatment facility is prepared to manage that level of water usage and that we have the ability to prep for that before those industry developments were to take place. The other thing is, as we're bringing in new employees, that's great, where are they going to live? Are we prepared to provide housing? Or is there housing available nearby? The other thing is the demand for childcare, demand for housing. So it's not just a water issue here. It's looking at the whole picture and understanding what are we going to do with all of these considerations and how will we prepare for that? So I think it's a great investment in our community, but I think there are other things we need to take into consideration to make sure that those individuals potentially relocating here have the ability to have a high quality of life like the rest of our current residents.
James Blanco?
I'd definitely be much more inclined to, to favor such a project for, for a simple reason, because we would actually, one, the water's actually coming right back to us, but also the benefits of the program, the jobs, the industry, et cetera, are actually coming right into the community. That's a very different, that's a very different scenario than what we're talking about with the LEAP project, a project in which I don't really see where we benefit from it. The representatives from the IEDC will say that we, we benefit from the LEAP project, but they haven't given us any reason to actually believe that. They haven't given us any statistics or what are we actually benefiting substantively? No, they haven't given us any reason to believe that. But I would definitely echo Iris' concerns as well because we do have concerns already with housing and all these different things.
Now, we're moving on to Mr. Flannally.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, it's a great question because what's different about Lafayette and, and West Lafayette and Tippecanoe County versus what they want in Lebanon? And I think when you're talking about a chip facility, you're really talking not just about jobs, you're really talking about national security because that's, that's why we're bringing the chips back, and that's a whole nother conversation. But again, it comes back to the question, why, why wasn't this project built where the water is in the first place? Because I think we're all in favor of that. Not only will it be good for our local economy, but it's good for the state and it's good for, it's good for national security for a lot of different reasons. So yes, I would certainly support it if it was here locally, but we still, that's with the caveat that we still have to have the third-party independent research done to make sure that we don't damage our own water security long-term. So again, there's just questions that we don't know the answers to yet, and it's hard to make a decision without having that information.
Thank you. And now we're going to open this up for rebuttal if any of the candidates would like to mention anything about this. Now is your time to do so. Oh, go right ahead.
So it's always funny that this is rebuttal period. Much of the time, we're not actually, you know, engaged in rebuttal. We're agreeing with another. I do want to first say that I agree totally with Iris, that when we're thinking about bringing jobs to the community, it has to be a complete package. We need to be thinking about what is the effect on our infrastructure? Is the infrastructure of childcare, housing available as well? And we need to think of that as, in a totality. And we need to also think about the sustainability of the economic development in which we're engaged. But I want to make one point, and that is, I would be equally opposed to it in Tippecanoe County if it were conducted with the lack of transparency and the lack of planning that was shown in making it in Boone County. I would still be opposed to that under those conditions. I believe that government needs to be accountable, open, responsive, and it has not been, and if it were in Tippecanoe County, I would insist on the same things as well.
Iris?
Iris?
I would actually just kind of echo one of those things that David just shared of the concept of transparent communication. I think as we have developments considering coming into our community, there should be open communication of what that impact's going to be, and that's an incredibly crucial part that was missing from this. And I think that's a great point that you brought up.
Yeah, I guess I'd just make the comment as well, you know, having operated in a business for a long time that, where your economy is trust, and, and I think that's why, that's why our whole community is so upset about this project because there hasn't been the transparency. And when you don't have transparency, it's impossible to have trust. And I think that's, of course, we have to have the infrastructure to support these projects, but we have to have trust first before we move forward.
Okay, let's move on to question number five. Do you have specific ideas to support or enhance the safety of Purdue students in the near-campus neighborhoods? And the first person on this question is Brian Russell. Brian?
That's a good question. I think that Purdue's safety, I think we have the Purdue Police Department, and I think my, my viewpoint is that you lean on the experts. If you don't know what the answer is, you go to the experts. You collect data, as Mr. Sanders says. You get, you take input from the community that it's affecting. In this case, I would lean heavily on Mr. Flannally and his expertise on what to do. I know we have a lot of the, the blue light safety boxes, and I think that's a great network to have in place, and I think we need to keep doing more of that. I like when we have awareness vigils and demonstrations that bring, bring awareness to issues of campus safety. And I mean, if, if the kids aren't safe, they're not going to, they're not going to want to come back, and that's what we got to focus on.
Iris, do you take the next question?
So I think one of the, I want to first highlight some really amazing programs that I think Purdue currently has for students that I leveraged myself as a student a couple years ago. And they have walking partners where you can contact, either it's a volunteer with the police department or students, and they will walk you if it's in the evening or if you have to walk, you know, really far across campus. And I think that's a great start to making sure that students who might feel unsafe have that support there, and it's not taking away from our police department. So kind of coming up with collaborative, creative approaches. A lot of those students who were kind of our walking buddies, were going to school to potentially become law enforcement, and so that was a great opportunity for them to get, you know, kind of experience in that. I think I'd really like to see an expansion in mental health services available for Purdue University students. Purdue has a start for that with CAPS, but I think that could be really greatly expanded to make sure that not only do we have police, but we also have support for social service situations.
All right, James Blanco?
One of the ideas that I'd be in favor of would be possibly a text alert system or, but also in general, I think it's one of those times where I'm happy to hear out people to, because, I mean, that's how I've been, to the best of my ability, have conducted myself as a counselor, but also conducted my reelection bid. I've been knocking plenty of doors. I've knocked almost 800 doors since early September, contacted over 1,200 voters. I mean, it's, that's just how I've been operating, and I'm happily to approach this issue in a similar way.
Thank you. And now Mr. Flannally.
Yeah, well, you know, this is, it's such an important question because, again, I have students myself that are at Purdue, and what is one of our biggest concerns right now for any university, any school environment, we're worried about guns on campuses, we're worried about violence on campus. And we're very, very fortunate in our community because we have local law enforcement that collaborates very well together. Chief Cox did a fantastic job at Purdue, and, and Chief Weedy has stepped right in. They have an amazing staff. They, they have such good programming, not just, not just from a, a public safety perspective in terms of enforcement, but also for the programs that they have where they have outreach for students that might be in crisis, and they work together with other area law enforcement. So working together with West Lafayette Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, Lafayette PD, a lot of great work is being done. And I also think that we can continue to focus on technology and infrastructure and all those things that, that bring safety awareness.
And David Sanders?
So in my role as Chair of the University Senate Student Affairs Committee, I have, I have worked with the police chiefs at Purdue specifically on these issues. And one of the things is, I'd like to expand this. When we're talking about student safety, we need to include things like bicycle safety and safety when we're talking about use of e-bikes and scooters and so on. And this is something that where I'm actively working with the police chief, Police Chief Weeta, at, at Purdue. So I also want to mention that I have frequent, ongoing conversations with the police chief in West Lafayette about exactly these issues. When there's, when there are issues about interactions between the West Lafayette Police and, or Purdue Police and the, and students, we immediately have a conversation about those issues.
Okay, we'll open it up now to any further exploration of student safety.
I think, was anyone else going to go? Okay. So I just wanted to kind of emphasize that I think it's really important that we have a really strong partnership between our West Lafayette Police Department and the Purdue Police Department. And then we're also, we also have an open forum for students to really share what do they want to see for public safety, because none of us here are currently students on campus, so we might not be able to know exactly what's going on and, and how they're feeling. And so I think it'd be a great opportunity to really hear from students on campus and understand what they would like to see. I think there's a lot of concerns about sexual trauma survivors and what resources they can go to and having kind of a trusted environment, and so I would like to see that definitely expanded.
Would anybody else like to speak? Go ahead.
So one of the purposes of the Student Affairs Committee is to advocate on the part of students, and we have actually advanced resolutions through the Senate that are initiated by student government specifically on these issues of student safety, of access to mental health. These are all incredibly important issues to the students and I believe to the community at large. So working with the students and also working with the police departments, that collaboration is incredibly important.
All right, now moving on to our next question. What specific initiatives or policies do you plan to advocate for as a city council member to address and improve community mental health? And how do you envision collaborating with local stakeholders to implement these measures effectively? This question, we're going to start off with Iris.
So I think the first thing I would highlight is, my family currently owns a small private practice in West Lafayette, and, you know, we've really seen specifically with our patients that it's incredibly difficult to get in with a mental health provider. And so I think making sure that we have increased mental health providers, providing either some sort of incentive for them to relocate here or maybe an education reward of some sort for mental health providers, because that is a dire need here in the community. I also think that we can work to make sure that we have resources. I think the West Lafayette Police Department, bringing on a social worker is a great start to that, and I would love to see that really kind of at the center of a lot of these conversations, that we have that initial start, and I'd love to see that kind of expand and touch base with her to see what additional support do you need in this situation and what would you like to see happen? Because she's the one out there doing that work from the city perspective.
Okay, thank you. James Blanco?
I'll definitely say that mental health is truly, it's personal even for me because of some of the things that I went through, but, and I'll say that it's one of the things that makes me grateful for just how wonderful a community this is, because when I went through some pretty rough stuff, actually in the middle of my council term, people really rallied behind me and really stepped up, and I think that's, that's a big portion of what we need to do. But I think there's really, there is need for more funding, for more, for more providers because you can, it can be a month or something, it can be, take quite a while if you need to see a therapist to be able to see one. So increased funding is something I would think of.
Thank you. And now on to Patrick Flannally.
Yeah, such, such an important question. In all my years in working in law enforcement, it was, one of the most distressing calls that any police officer can respond to is somebody in crisis. And that's when you get a true look at how the system works, especially when it's 2:00 in the morning, it's 3:00 in the morning, and there are no resources available. And unfortunately, it's been a problem that's been pushed down from the federal government down to the state level and really pushed on to communities that don't have the local resources. Fortunately for us here in Tippecanoe County, we do have the United Way that's invested a ton of resources into helping us with this. We have NAMI. We have programs that specifically train our police officers on how to deal with people in crisis. We now have the resources available at our local hospitals and through other care providers where we can bring people to, and we didn't have that 20 years ago. So we've done a lot of great work here. We should be really proud of that as a community, but we always have things that we can improve on as well.
All right, thank you. David Sanders?
So I have focused quite a bit of effort on trying to address the problem of addiction in our community. And I've been working with a number of local organizations, local stakeholders on that particular issue. We currently are trying to decide how to spend the opioid settlement money that the city is receiving, and I participated in a committee that's working on that particular issue. I work with the police chief who is, is heading part of that effort. Also have worked with the Tippecanoe Health Authorities on trying to obtain more resources for dealing with this issue locally. And in that capacity, I've also been able to bring in some local companies that are associated with Purdue to, that have some new approaches to dealing with this issue. So there couldn't be anything that's more important, and I feel we're trying, making some efforts at trying to address it.
Thank you. And Brian Russell?
Yeah, these have all been really great answers. I would echo a lot of them. Continuing to support our police by bringing alongside mental health workers, social workers that can take some of the, the pressure off of our police force, continuing to support groups like MHA, NAMI, our homeless services such as LTHC and LUM. And I know a lot of students were affected through the COVID that sort of have some residual anxiety and depression and things of that nature, and I think we keep supporting our students, even as they've moved past high school and college, they need, they need help to, for as long as it takes for them to get better. And so continuing to expand and support these programs, I think, is key to addressing mental health in our community.
Thank you. And now it's time for our rebuttal, so we're going to open up this discussion to all of the candidates if anybody would like to add anything. Go ahead.
I think it's, again, one of my roles as chief, I served on the National Advisory Board for a group called Fight Crime Invest in Kids. And as that role, I traveled to Congress, testified on behalf of this organization to try to reauthorize the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Protection Act. That provides vital funding for a lot of the programs that really drive programs for our youth. Part of that, part of that organization also has a really big push into early intervention programs for new mothers, for things like Read to Succeed, nutrition programs, all of these things that we know if we can, if we can attack these issues early in childhood development, then we can solve a lot of these issues downstream. So I think we have to take a long-term approach at this, really look at how do we get upstream to solve the problems, and then how do we provide the resources locally for people in crisis that we need to get to that bridge?
Anybody else? Go ahead, Iris.
I would also add, I think, really focusing on resources that already exist in our, in our county and how we can continue to support those, kind of like Brian mentioned. I wanted to highlight the work of the Recovery Cafe and really the Tippecanoe County Public Health Department. I think they've really created a lot of great resources for individuals struggling with, with addiction, and then also they're focusing on maternal mortality and how they can help reduce that in the county. And I think that's a great kind of step forward, kind of like you're talking about, looking at a long-term, long-term aspect to reduce mental health issues in, in general.
Okay, if there are no further comments on that topic, it's time now for closing statements, and we start tonight on closing statement from James Blanco.
Well, thank you again for WLFI and News and the League of Women Voters for putting this forum on. It's some pretty good questions, I would say. It's some pretty important, important questions for this community. I just want to reiterate that I'm keeping on fighting for you as a, as someone who represents working people, renters, and especially our, our majority renter city, that I just want to keep on representing people who often don't feel heard. And, I mean, that's always my priority, and I'll be, I will keep on doing that.
Thank you. And now we're going to move on to a closing statement from Patrick Flannally.
Yeah, thank you. Again, my wife, Kristen and I, we've raised three boys in West Lafayette. We're both Purdue graduates. My mom Rita still lives on the house that I grew up in on Ashland Street in Barberry Heights. My dad Frank was, he really helped start the recycling program in the 80s with his good friend, Mayor Sonia Marjoram. So something is, my parents really instilled in us, in our family of eight, I'm the youngest of eight, since I was a child, was service, community service. My work in policing and experience as chief has taken me from the streets of our community here to the halls of the State House, to Congress, and even one time to the White House. But West Lafayette is my home, and I want to use all those lessons and the experience that I've gained to help keep our community safe and ensure that it's thriving for generations to come. And I'll accomplish this by working with all stakeholders, ensuring that all voices are heard. Recent events, I think, have really reminded us why collaboration is so important, why transparency in government builds community trust, and I'm confident that working together, we're going to find solutions and move our community forward.
David Sanders?
Also want to thank organizers again for this great forum. I'm really pleased that the forum has been really focused on positive messages of how we can contribute to the community. I'd just like to add that I have really made a tremendous amount of effort to listen to the community and be a leader on the issues that they have concerns about, and that this is bipartisan, nonpartisan. This is what I believe is what I would like to see in another candidate. I've always striven to be the sort of candidate, the sort of representative that I would want to vote for. And working together with people and focusing on accountability and responsiveness is what I promise to you, because I've been doing that in the past. Thank you very much.
Iris?
Yeah, I again want to thank both, both of the organizers of this great event and have been really grateful for the conversation here tonight. I do want to emphasize that, you know, I have shown, I've, I've lived in West Lafayette for about 10 years, and I bought my first house here about two years ago, and really decided that this is the place that I want to be moving forward, and this is my home. And I would love to continue to build a resilient, strong, sustainable community for potentially my, my future family. I think I bring a new level of representation to the city council and a, a great perspective, specifically with a background in, in natural resources and public health. And I would hope, I hope to one day serve you all on the city council. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And now finally to Brian Russell.
Yeah, thank you WLFI and League of Women Voters for having us. You know, I'm doing this because I care about our community. I am deeply invested in here. My whole family's here, my kids are here, everybody that I know is, that I, that I care about is here in West Lafayette. And that, this is where, this is where it starts and ends for me. I don't have any aspirations to go to Indianapolis or Washington DC. I see myself, if I'm lucky enough to get voted, that I would have a term to learn and a term to, to govern and a term to pass it on to the next generation. a term to govern, and a term to pass it on to the next generation. So this is not a career for me, this is something that I'm doing in service of our community. And so if you'd like to know more about me, I'm hosting a meet and greet at our brewery 7:00 PM on Thursday. I'd love to see you down there, and I hope that I can get your support. So vote Brian Russell. Thanks.
And thank you. I want to thank all of the candidates for participating in our candidate forum this evening. To find out more about these candidates and all of the candidates on the November ballot, you can head to our website at wlfi.com.
And for a complete recap, you can watch the entire debate over again on our website. That's wlfi.com.
And be sure to watch News 18 at 10 on the CW, or later tonight on News 18 at 11 for a recap. That concludes our candidate forum. Have a great night.